You guys are muted and we can't hear anything online.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, now.
All right.
Just in case people didn't hear this, we did have a moment of silence at the beginning of the meeting for Sue Lesser, a teacher at TIS who passed away. So we all miss Sue very much. Can we thank, thank you for the moment of silence.
And thank you, Dr. Willitt. I will entertain a motion to approve the August ninth, twenty twenty-three minutes.
So move second.
Any discussion? Want to do a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Christina?
Aye.
I'm aye as well, though those are approved. Next, we can move on to public participation. If you're online or we don't have any folks in person, but if you'd like to share your thoughts and ideas with the board, please raise your hand and I'll call on you. You can mute and please, once called upon, please list your name and address and you'll have two minutes to address the board. Do we have anybody who'd like to say anything? I don't see anyone. Nope. Okay. Let's move on to, we don't have Jacob tonight for correspondence. So maybe we can move on to bits of information. Does any board member have anything they'd like to speak about at this moment? No? Hey, we are moving right along. Let's move to the students' represent, student representatives' report.
So we have our first week of school, which in town freshman orientation. Okay, we had welcome back dance.
Okay, so clubs are starting back up. Just this week, Student Council, GSA, ATS, DECA, the World Language Club, Model UN, and morning announcements have either started earlier this week or are starting later this week with more clubs on the way. Speaking of clubs, the DECA fundraiser this year is in the fall. We are doing Operation Gratitude again. Someone special is the chair, you know. And Operation Gratitude is something that we're doing for veterans, the department members, where we are making paracord bracelets, collecting donations, and more. And we'll give you some more updates as it develops.
And with clubs, we also have school sports, starting like cross-country volleyball, football, and boys' football soccer.
Any questions? How does it get back? Get back into the groove already?
Yeah.
Okay, I hope you guys have a great year. Thank you.
Me too. I was gonna ask how the, the school dance was.
Um, we didn't attend. Not as many people showed up as we hoped. But last year it didn't happen at all. This year it happened.
There you go.
Well, thank you so much, girls. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on to the super.
So the first item for tonight is the Paraeducator contract. As you know, once the bargaining unit and the Board of Ed bargaining team finish, it then goes to the unit for ratification. And then when that hap, after that is complete, it will then come to the Board of Education for approval. So the Board of Ed has this contract. We're able to make it public after you approve this. But at this time, you have an, we have access to it. I'll scroll down to the agenda item itself to give you some of the highlights. But you do have the red lines that you can take a look at that. If you have any questions, we'll help in every way we can. Also, we have Ms. Gallant-Chang, who was the chair of the committee as well. And Ms. Lren will also be here soon, or will be here soon. So you could ask her questions as well. So some of the highlights of the contract are that it really helps us expand professional development for the paras, a special para-education. The Paraeducator Professional Development Committee will be created. We have one of these for the overall staff and futures. This will allow for a special committee just dedicated to paraprofessional PD as well. Paraeducator PD will now be occurring on early release days. Before, could not keep the paraeducators. Now there be, there's an agreement that they will also participate in the professional development. So we'll have a lot of professional development that can then overlap and paras can take it with teachers, which is very good. We wanted to make sure, you know, we had a, had a, that workforce being updated as well. Other item, paraeducators rehired within a year will be given credit for prior services for wage placement. So if a paraeducator for some reason had to leave, sometimes they have to leave for a variety of reasons, personal reasons, and today they may come back six months later. This means that if they come back within a year, they come back into their same position, which is good because that tracks them back. Sometimes people will leave, especially during COVID, for reasons that really, you know, were just personal in nature and didn't have to do with much else. This means that they wouldn't lose everything. So that, they'll come back to us rather than go to someone else. Especially now when it's such a competitive market. Sick these days, provided we'll be prorated based on the date of hire for the first year. That was really just cleaning up a little so that when somebody comes in, it's prorated, they're not getting, you know, all days upfront. Six stipend amounts for hygiene services. So hygiene services, these are all things that the paras will do with students. Some of them will engage with students who need hygiene, you know, help, ABA, that type of thing. So there are stipends for paras who are working in that, you know, with that. And so these stipends were increased from three hundred to seven fifty. And stipend for PMT training, any para who's PMT trained, which is physical management training. We need to introduce some things as kids sometimes that may, may, you know, harm themselves or something. We are PMT trained, so we can go in and help them. This gives us stipend to paras to incentivize them to, you know, be PMT trained and help out the team. Compensation for covering a class, at this point, you know, we've needed to have sometimes so people step in for people that were ill, especially over COVID, things like that. And COVID is still, is still here. So this allows for a para to step in and do a longer period of time. And when they do that, they'll get paid eight dollars more than their typical contractual. That means, but that's actually a deal compared to other alternatives. So that helps us with workforce considerations because they can step in and take over the whole thing for our expanded. Day after Thanksgiving is added to the holiday, which is consistent with other units. New hire notification, that was just basically an agreement about how we would broadcast that to the, to the bargaining unit. Extended time period is submitted arbitration. Time, that's basically helping out the, the larger union, not just our local, but lar, the state reps. Because if they have to do something, it usually will take longer to do it. And they need a little bit more time to leave the file. So they wanted that in there. It's a three-year duration from twenty twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. It'll be retroactive because that's how these work. If we settle up after the beginning of the fiscal year, goes back retroactively. It's eliminating step three in year one, which is actually good because it helps us to be more competitive when we're, we're in a market for somebody coming in at the lowest position. It makes that position a little higher, so we're better, we're better suited to be able to keep our staff and, and get new ones because the other districts don't look as competitive, you know. So we are now more competitive against them. And the percentage increases are effective, seven one twenty-four, all bargaining unit members will get a two percent. GWI for all steps. And then effective seven one twenty-five, all bargaining members will get another two percent. The first year, I'm sorry, I jumped over the first year. The first year, they get a four percent. Steps four through thirteen plus a, a step. In the next year, it's two percent, and then the third year is two percent. So they are, you know, they, this is still gonna put us in a competitive, puts us in a competitive range with other districts, but it's, we're still sort of in the middle area with respect to compensation across our demographic group or county. Well, we're not five, we're not super low, we're, we're somewhere in the middle now with this. So it's not, you know, it's not out of, out of whack with, with, you know, what would be reasonable.
Oh, it sounds like a lot of work went into this, into these negotiations. And our orders are definitely so important to our school system. So thank you for that. Kind of recap. Dr. Willitt, does anyone have any questions?
I just have one. What would a starting salary then, or this, I guess, starting hourly rate be for a brand-new para?
That's at the end of that, let me open it, because my, my computer's running a little bit slower. But at the end of that document should be the steps. Let me see if I have that. The end of the red line. I have to wait for it to load here. It'll take a second. But you have it too. So it's, uh. So for the twenty-three, twenty-four year, sixteen dollars and twenty-four cents in an hour. And twenty-four, twenty-five, sixteen fifty-seven, twenty-five, twenty-six, sixteen ninety. It goes up, and that's at the, that's at, if you're entering at the, you know, start point. The people at the top would be getting twenty-three dollars, twenty-five cents per fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-three seventy-two fiscal year twenty-five, and twenty-four nineteen fiscal year twenty-six.
Any other questions for Dr. Willitt with regard to the paraeducator contract?
And this is your first read.
Yes. I was going to ask you if you could remind us what the next steps are.
Yeah. I mean, you could, you could choose to, you know, whether to action or you could just make that your first read. And then the next meeting would have the second speed, be in action at that point.
I think it's a good idea just to leave it as a first read for now.
Good question. So you, so we leave it as a first read. It said everything would go retroactive at the beginning of the square. So even if we delay it to the next meeting?
Yeah. This, what happens is the differential in pay they get paid. Yeah. Or directly.
Okay, any other questions? All right, Dr. Willitt, do you want to move on to the monthly financial report?
Sure. All right. So this is just the most important part, usually the, the. It's all the way back up. Here you go. Okay. Sometimes you can take a snapshot of them and blow that up a little. And it is in the agenda. If you download the agenda, you can get that and you can blow it up too. So a couple of quick notes. So this is early in the year, as you know. And so overall, you know, we, we haven't really incurred a whole lot. We haven't encumbered everything either. So it's still in, there's about four million, three hundred thirty-four thousand, six hundred seventy-three, or about ten percent of the budget. But it's not been, covered, spent at this point. And so, you know, that's typical for around this time of year. Going code by code, line one-ten salaries is under by two hundred fifty-one thousand, five hundred ninety. But this will go down as the district continues to hire the staff. We're still doing that. We're pretty much where we need to be with teachers, but we still have the paras and we talked about that, some para openings and so on. Substitutes, at this time, of course, it'll be under budget. We haven't done a lot of substitutes yet or had a lot of sub-coverage. Stipends, that's over budget, but currently we are, you know, reviewing the codes. There are student grants and donations that backfill into that. So that should balance that out in the next month or two. Health, life, and disability, two-ten is over budget by forty-seven thousand, roughly forty-eight. That's basically due to us covering some health insurance expenses. And it had to do also with, you know, each of those lines. And kind of when our staff fluctuates a little bit, there's gonna be fluctuations. So that's, that's a little over for that reason, some of the coverage stuff. FICA is under by six hundred eleven, but again, no, that's not crazy right now. Professional ed services, one hundred seventy-two thousand under budget that we haven't really spent on all the professional ed services. So most of these lines, tech services, under by eighty-five. Cleaning and rubbish services, you know, under by forty. Repair and maintenance, that's under by one hundred forty-four. Of course, we haven't done a lot of projects. Transportation is under. We haven't encumbered the majority of the, you know, of the, the routes yet. And, you know, that you'll see that drop fairly soon when we do that. The tuition, the same thing. It starts out high as you'd expect. And then as we, you know, we encumber it and we start to pay it, you're gonna see that get reduced significantly. In fact, we are a little bit, you know, we have more now starting the year than we anticipated when we were building the budget, you know, eighteen months ago. So, you know, we're keeping an eye on that again. We're gonna keep a very close eye on that this year. General supplies, that's over by twenty-four. That, that's really due to encoverances at this point. And so other accounts will, you know, in that line, facilities overall is under budget, even though that's over. So other accounts will probably be underspent to offset that, if that needs to be the case, you know. And what, what we've covered, we actually spend in that, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna balance it out via the lines. Instructional supplies, as you might imagine, is under because we, we are in the first couple of days, really, weeks of school. So we have not purchased a lot of that. Energy gets transferred, as you know, for the UISAF account at the very beginning of the year. So that's a small amount left. Textbooks, we haven't purchased those textbooks yet. So again, that's not gonna be in, you know, under budget by about one oh four. Miscellaneous supplies, it's under budget by forty-eight. And district and athletics will continue to, you know, burn that down. And equipment, seven thirty is under by seventy-one. And again, it's, it's just that we have been spending all, all of that at this point in the year. So as you might imagine, you know, this is just really the first month. And so we're, we, we didn't even begin spending here because it's the August report. And so a lot of that's gonna be positive. And as we go through, you'll see it, you'll see it there. Yeah.
Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Willitt with regard to the money?
I forgot that. What overtime did we extend already over the summer? That's a big chunk of our year budget that would have just been July and August.
I'm guessing, but I'll go look into it to make sure it's true, that it's accurate. But I'm thinking it's facilities and things over the summer, work on the grounds, things like that. We also have people who are who had to take leave or time in those, in those groups, and other people had to cover for them. So I'm guessing it's gonna be a combination of having to cover for people who had to take, for these variety of reasons. Because they were absent, it also pushes everybody into a need to have other people work more because they couldn't get it done.
And then I was just wondering, the, for the insurance, the two hundred thousand that the, we got from ARFA that the council approved, where does that hit our ledger here somewhere, or how is that being accounted for? Or did we change the budget number to account for that two hundred thousand? This might be a better question for FFC.
Yeah, yeah. And I'll.
Okay. All right. I'll put a note to talk about that next week. That's all I have. Thank you. Anyone else?
No, the numbers will probably jive a little more.
Yeah, as this whole year goes on. Yep.
Yeah, we're early.
Christina? Don't see your hand, so I'm going in.
Nope, I'm okay.
Good, good.
Sorry. Drink this. I'm sorry, all right, closing.
Lots of windows there.
This, this, now let me, let me blow up the, so you can see as many people as possible there.
Yeah, yep.
The exciting part.
Going to the far.
Yeah. Okay. So we are, you know, we're not on policy.
No, no, we're not there yet.
Sorry. Okay, ready?
Yes.
Got it. So the next agenda item is just a housekeeping thing. Statement protocol. So this came up just because this has actually happened over a period of a couple of years. Sometimes what will happen is somebody will ask for a statement to be included. So best practice for such a thing, because if the statement is included after, after the fact, it's who do you send it to? And where have you been going? And, you know, is it, you know, is it the same thing as the one that was submitted and made up? And all of those things, you know, create issues, questions, and some practical organizational issues. So as a practical, you know, organizational matter, if a board member would like a letter or document to be included in the minutes, that please follow the following procedure. Make the request to attach a letter or document publicly during the meeting. And then take that letter or document that you want added and hand it to the chair or vice chair for protocol. And doing so, then we'll properly, you know, we'll set up the proper process for the document to be, you know, provided to Jen and then be included in the minutes and all of that stuff. So that just will make sure nothing gets lost, nothing gets missed. It's going straight to, mentioned to public sector and it's in the minutes. Then somebody reading the minutes will know that they can get it at the back of those minutes, you know, that type of thing. And so it's just the best practice according to our attorney.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Willitt. Tony?
Yeah, I mean, if we want to codify this, could this then be added to either the running of a meeting policy for the minutes, the policy that covers minutes?
I thought it, one of the definitely can. So whatever you wanted to do with it, it was just a, looking at it from a process, what do you, they want it to be mentioned.
We'll, we'll take the, the, the.
That's a great idea. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm just, are we talking about when we say something in a meeting and then we give it to Lisa?
Yeah, it's, so what happens is, you know, if you say something in a meeting, she's getting most of it, right?
Right.
If you want, let's say you say something in a meeting, but then, and, you know, let's say the statement and then say, and I would like this, this letter or this statement included in the minutes. Then, you know, you're providing it to the chair. The chair takes the thing and then brings it.
That hasn't really happened. Has it? I'm just, I'm just honestly, I don't ever recall.
Yes.
Really?
Yeah. Actually, we're just setting up, you know.
That's, yeah, I just was like, I didn't think we, anybody did that, but maybe they did. Just formalizing, adding a written statement, okay, to the meeting. Got it.
Yeah, we're done.
Yeah.
So just, sorry, just to be clear, this is more of a informational sort of guidance type of thing from our lawyers that we should follow until it becomes policy? Is that just?
This is just the, this is a best practice.
Right.
Yep.
And so just letting everybody know, because there's many potential issues with doing it after a meeting. Because who do you send it to? You know, there's, there's just a bunch of things that could happen that would make that a, a longer process or a less organized process. If it happens in the meeting, it's this statement given to the chair. The chair then gives it to Jen, and then it goes to appropriate people to make sure it's in the, you know. It's just gonna make it so that nothing gets lost, so nothing is, you know, changed or different than whatever it is to end in the meeting. And then in the minutes, it's actually mentioned and handed. So this exact thing is what we talked about, and this is going to.
Right. And it's good for transparency and everyone's on the think page with it. That was the idea. Okay, good. Dr. Willitt, do you want to move on to the capital budget? Unless anybody had any other comments with regard to statements for minutes? I don't think so.
Capital, you know, as you know, working partner at FFC has actually talked about this too. And, and so you have a document as part of the actual agenda that highlights the stuff that would be added into the capital plan for the current request. Should you agree that this, this stuff should be in it? Having said that, as I was working on it, I also was trying to clean up the one pager that gives you a history of what was and what is, what is to come. So the one that was attached was where I was at that moment in time. And what I did is I just took and cleaned that one up a little bit more. So the one that's in the, that I posted to the dashboard before is essentially the same information, just stripping away the stuff that was already done and over. So you'll see that the only difference with this is this version has, and you can access it on, from your computers through the dashboard. This version is the same thing, but I took out the stuff that we have already completed. So you'll notice there's no fiscal year twenty-two stuff anymore because it's been completed. It's also linked, so if you click on the actual item itself, it will jump to the actual description of the full item. So the spread, both the spreadsheet and the document available to Board of Ed will go right to the items. The documents are also available to the public. Because if you go to this item on a, on a public site, if you click or you copy paste this into the browser, you will also see the listing of all of the capital requests. So it's available to the board, it's also available to the public. And the only real difference between the spreadsheet here and this, that you have right now tonight and the spreadsheet that was published in the agenda, is that I just took out the stuff that was obviously already expended. So twenty-two is, you know, those projects are no longer part of it. Anything you saw for twenty-two, these are all the remaining projects and what year they were in and generally how much they cost. In red, by the priority, high priority as distinguished by facilities. Although you can choose, you can tell me to change that if you want, because this is a live talk and I can change it. Kind of a working dock if you wanted me to make changes. Blue are medium priority items, and again, these are linked. And you can tell the year that it's in because. If you can see over here is the, this layer twenty-nine, twenty-four to twenty-nine. It's hard to get this whole thing. You can see this in your own dashboard, but to try to, I'm trying to get it to, if I shrink this, hopefully you can. There. It becomes hard to see again. Notice that to the right, some of the notes, many of these projects are potentially reimbursable at forty-nine point six four percent. So you're looking at a number that we might get forty-nine point six four percent back. It would have to be bonded so that in case we didn't get that, we would still have the full amount to pay it. But there is a chance that, you know, Lisa, for instance, if she did a big thing, would not, if we got that reimbursement, would not have to then spend, you know, on that as, as much. So you'll see in the notes over here, some of them are for forty-nine, some of them are an actual figure, like about seven hundred thousand. And that relates to the type of grant we're applying for. So every one of the high priority projects, we will probably get reimbursed. There's a reasonable chance we would get a forty-nine point six four percent reimbursement, or the town. When I say we, I'm talking really about the town. And we would get that, but that would offset with the town over there. So that's, that's basically it. But going back to the agenda item itself, you know, you've got the BGP kitchen, apothecy, floor, the THS, the TMS, one of the room stalls, doors. Although some of those did come off because we were able to get it funded differently. That was one of them. So again, this has.
So that the remaining amount?
Yeah. And I did update, I think, the newest one on the, no, that's. Yeah, and I did update, I think, the newest one on the, no, that's actually paid for entirely. We were even paid for that separately. And you'll see that too. As I was going through it, that's where it was at the moment in time. But now the new one up on the dashboard strips it out too. So the, the best thing to look at, that it's going to give you everything all together, is that spreadsheet. But, you know, these are, these are the items that are in the agenda itself. And the spreadsheet, once you're ready, I can actually publish. Once you're done and you have told me that this is what you want to do, I will take this, publish it to our capital page on the website. Because we have a capital page that lists all the projects and lists everything. I'll put that spreadsheet and everything on the capital page once you tell me that this is what you want. So tonight, our working, our working spreadsheet, if you will, is, is really this. And this is easier to read, a little bit easier to read. I can open these, you can open them, the public can open them to see the specifics. But anything that is not on here, it's been, you know, removed because it was finished or removed because we funded it. You can tell that the locker room stuff for 15,000 is off because we funded it to, we funded it through a town money. It already, we have this stuff. So this is your first read.
Yeah, I was going to ask.
So here, so where you are right now, this is your first read in the process.
Yeah.
We will be bringing it back on September 27th for your second read. And any other changes you can process and think about it, digest it. FFC maybe, you know, if it'll come up again, we'll talk about it or not.
We, we didn't change anything from what we talked about last.
No, I mean, it's pretty much, other than like those lockers and everything.
Right, because we do that, it might come off.
Right, so that is, at this point, no, but. So you'd have your second read as a board on the 27th, I think, right? And then October 4th, which is earlier than usual, we have to hand it over to the town. So by that next meeting here in September, you need to tell me what you want me to do differently. If you want any of those to come off or something. Right now, that's where we would have it. In those years, unless you're, you're opposed to it for some reason, in which case I'll work on.
And there's a lot of security, high priorities.
Yeah, and that's, you know, that, you know, that's what people want.
Well, no, I don't disagree. I just.
All right. And FFC had a couple cracks at this too, so.
The district's not a candidate in, in the FFC.
Yeah. I just hate to see it. Like not yesterday. You know what I mean? So that's all. But yeah, no, he did, he did a thorough meeting.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Willet about this? For Dr. Willet, anyone? I'm sorry if I cut you off.
Nope, you did not.
Okay. Think we're good to move on? Okay, thank you. Let's move on to the policy.
Getting started.
Yeah.
Moving forward.
Good feeling, energy.
The anticipation.
The anticipation.
It's Tony, Paul, and me.
Getting ready for the board shaking team. All right, so next item. We crawl. Okay. So policy 5081, bullying prevention and intervention. The last update for 5081 was 2015. So this is kind of, you know, this is a 2023 update for us. And there are many, many, the, the documents look very similar. So if you click on these, and at home you can click on them, they, they go to the webpage. You can also catch this for anybody at home. If you copy and paste this into your browser, you will jump to the policy page and you can scroll down to 5081 so you can follow along. If you do that, you'll notice there are many similarities between 2015 and 20, the newest one here that we're putting in in 2023 as an update. However, there are little, little, a bunch of little changes. And there's so many little changes in here that instead of trying to pick out every single little language change, we just took the whole Shipman's model and just put the whole thing in. Because it reads similarly, but there are so many nuanced little things. We want to make sure that we don't miss one. Having said that, one of the nuanced things would be just in the way that they're describing what it is, you know, bullying is. And in this case now, it is indirect, it's severe, you know, direct or indirect and severe, persistent, pervasive. In the past, it used to, you know, have to be something that was repeated. And they replaced language like that with persistent. So whether repeated or persistent or different or the same, you know, many, many people in practice feel like that's simple. Because if it's something that keeps happening versus something that, you know, wasn't. You know, persistence is, is the new term. So that's one of the changes to give you an example of that, you know, there's a word change there. So we grabbed everything and just put the whole policy as a model where. At the end of the doc, because it's pretty extensive, and it does cover cyberbullying, teen dating, discrimination, harassment. You can also look at it in the, in the agenda items too. As you go down to the bottom, you can see the regulation. I included the new regulation that we would use as well. And at the end of the regulation, even though you don't necessarily vote on the regulation, and here, the regulation is the safe climate plan because that's what gets executed under the policy is the safe climate plan, which for all intents and purposes would be the regulation in this consideration. So you're, you're proving that, you know, the policy, that this is what I would be putting with it as the regulation. At the end, there are documents, form, form docs for people to use in order to submit reports. So just to get down there. And it defines exactly how we follow, you know, follow what we need to do, what the steps are, what an investigation is, improving requirements, annual notices that we have to publish, assessments, and here are the documents. So when, you know, somebody has a case of suspected bullying or behavior of teen violence, anything like that, or teen dating violence, they fill out the form and submit it to the school. Typically, they're submitting it to the administration. They can hand it to anybody, but then it has to eventually make its way to the administration. And so there's a series of documents that, that are used for this purpose. And, you know, the, these are the investigation notes. We would be following this, backfilling it probably as a Word document. And then all of these things are available to the people who have the rights to see them under purple. So it's soup to nuts, the whole thing. And these forms are from Ship. So we utilize the forms from Shipman right off this. We have, as we were already saying.
So with those forms, what happens after the forms reach the administration? What, what's the next procedure?
Well, usually they're reporting suspected, you know, bullying. So then they investigate it. It goes right to one of the admin, admin, investigate that incident or situation. And then we do, we handle it as the disciplinary matter that, that being.
Tony, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Nope.
Okay.
Again, it's your first read, so you can adjust it.
Okay, I think we can move on to the next one.
Okay.
Well, that bullying one was a big one.
Yeah. There's a lot to it.
Yeah, and I, I like the inclusion of the forms.
And the Dr. Willet's point. This is how I respond, a lot of minor changes in there.
Yeah.
Previous step where it's been important and needed to be codified.
It seems like very nuanced changes. I think I missed that meeting, that policy meeting where we discussed that one. Because I, it looks like, looks great.
This is lagging a little bit. I'm trying to scroll down to the next one. Scroll and it doesn't move, so.
Well, you have it memorized, don't you, Dr. Willet?
Now the mouse.
I'm deceiving it.
No, I don't know. Thank you. Okay. Still seeing her, right? Yeah, the cookies are for everyone. Well, thank you. I'm at the cookies for everyone if you want. I'm sorry.
Don't be.
Okay, so the next item here is.
It's the retention.
I'm going to wild stroll. It's 4142, retention of electronic records. So this policy is not quite as long, and I'll start talking about it while I'm scrolling through it. We needed to update our retention of records policy. So you can tell what the older one was. Again, I put a link in. It's the 2013 version. We usually have some very strict protocols about retention of records. Some have to be retained for seven years, some from 10, some don't have to be retained at all. So basically, this just updates it with the, the model for shipping a good one and make sure that, you know, we are doing everything to the letter of what Shipman says and reflects the date. Now, we have actually done a pretty good job of this. We have been in communication with the state and we've gone over to mostly electronic records. And so that took a lot of, you know, you have to get mentioned and do things certain way. So we've actually been following the state's stuff for a while. This is just backing us into making sure Shipman's policy is updated to reflect the current practices. And same thing, you know, whenever there's something like this, you know, I also just, I'll throw in something like, you know, long like this, I'll throw in the regulation too, so you can see that, you know, the policy sets what we do. The regulation sets the individual practices of each of the schools in our central office. And that's it. We're just taking the boilerplate from Shipman, overlaying it. And it's updating what we've pretty much been doing anyway, because you have to by state law.
And as you can see, from, from 2013 to 2023, you know, a lot changed regarding electronics and then record retention. While the district has been doing a good job of keeping it, but that, this is one of those continuing initiatives to try to make sure our policies reflect what we're actually doing and vice versa.
Yeah, it's great to get a codify to reflect what we're actually doing. Yeah. Yeah. Any questions or comments for either Tony or Dr. Willet on this one? You know, these are exciting ones. A lot of clerical.
He's sitting in a.
Right, we've got, you know, we've got that queue of ones that just need to be, you know, run through the machine. And we finally got the chance to really pop a couple of these into the, into the mix, so.
These are available for anyone at home. If you open up the agenda, you can scroll down to them to.
Okay, well, then I think we can move on to the next one.
The 4100, we were able to not do a complete overlay because there were some unique things to the district, but it was then reviewed by the attorney. And so it represents how we would be, you know, what's added, what's being changed. In this particular update, there was new language for how you refer to certain, those people who are otherwise able. There's new language for that. Also, the agencies that work with and for this are different. So that's some of the bigger different changes here, just updating the agencies. Because many, back when this was done in 2011, it was different agency names. So it's really updating how, using appropriate terminology for the individuals that have exceptionalities and using the appropriate departments of the state. And so that's essentially it. And you go through and see that's essentially what it's doing, is taking out old language and putting in the new language. You know, the strike blue is the old, the yellow italics is the new. Office of Protection and Advocacy is no longer, you know, in existence, that type of thing. And now you can see that it's abuse investigation under DPS. And then we also put in, in that case, that stands on its own because I don't think we actually have a follow-up writing to that. Right now, we're writing some of the two update, those language pieces in there.
But this goes along with, in fact, we did it about the same time that we did the bullying. With, with everything that was going on, we, with a group fellow, it was important to really kind of shift focus a little bit, make sure that we were, our policies were protecting everybody and that they were up to date and could provide the best umbrella that is possible.
I like the modernization of this one. It's great. Yeah. Any other, any questions or comments about this one for either Tony or Dr. Willet? Is it good job? Yeah.
Okay, so have we arrived at I-8?
Yeah.
Possible. All right, so we are at I-8. I think we get there as fast. This is policy 5700 on transgender and gender nonconforming youth. So you know that there are guidelines, state of Connecticut, gender civil rights. The policy committee has been working also on this. And it represents quite a bit of work going back through March, you know, April, May. The chair, she's credit, the whole does sort of gone through and guided the process. So where we are at this point is, there's, the basic summary is to preface that this document is to help codify for the school district what the Board expects the school district to be doing. And, you know, you can't go astray of what the state has said, but it can, you know, expound upon that. So you'll notice the state, the doc guidelines is maybe a page or two, this is longer. This is the relevant legal references from the state of Connecticut that, that back up this document. And then you can see here and at home, it's a little easier maybe to see it in your own, you know, on your own computers, but it's a little small. But it has definitions to help everybody understand what references. You know, when they make a reference in the paragraph and use a certain term, you know, what is that term defined to mean? So not everybody knows that cisgender, for instance, CIS gender is, you know, a man who identifies as male, you know, identifies as female. So this gives a definition to everything. Then you get through the definitions, it goes into the nitty gritty of what is expected of the school district. You know, does directly address things like harassment and privacy. One of the things that the policy committee grappled with was some of the language about, you know, notifications, things like that. So the older languages, people will, the reason why it's included the way it is here is people who followed this knew that as we went through policy committee, you know, there was conversations about it and language started this, you know, in a certain way. And as it went through the various iterations of the meetings, it landed in this. So the earlier versions of this, people were looking at the policy committee meetings, they would have seen the yellow. The updated version of this is the blue. So in this case, it's yellow strike, blue add, but, you know, it's still striking it. It's just highlighting it. So the news, the new piece of it is relative to notification. You know, and references to policy 5030 is involved in appearance. And then as you go scrolling down, the only other difference here really from the policy meeting we had last and this, was that there was a reference to changes being made only if it were a court order. But I, I noticed that that's not actually the case anymore, not in Connecticut. So that language is broader than that, but in Connecticut, you don't need a court order. So that, we said it was not accurate, and just struck that because it's not accurate. In the state of Connecticut, it does not require that. So that was the only change there from the meeting. This came from the meeting. This happened after the meeting. So I just wanted to let you know that's why I did that here. It was the only change I made that policy, you know, didn't cover directly was this because the state of Connecticut, it wasn't actually. And so that's, that's it. It covers restaurants, it covers locker rooms, covers student information systems, covers dress codes. It's got quite a bit of talk, you know, quite a bit of language here. So I guess I'll hand it over to the chair.
Yeah, I just want to, we want to start out by thanking the committee. And we've probably, more than any other policy, you know, since I've been doing this, we really had some good conversation over, over a series of months with the intent, much like the other policy that we've talked about today, of providing a comfortable environment for all. You know, I know there's been a whole lot of discussion about the, the guidance that, that Dr. Willet provided to the staff and the difference between that and this policy. You know, while we do have to. You know, while we do have to conform to and stay under the laws of the state, but we have the opportunity here to expound upon some of that. Uh, to, like Dr. Will said, you will see there's some additional verbiage and clarification on the parental notification, making sure we were clear when that was going to happen and honestly, when that wasn't going to happen, that here are the rules, here are the laws, here's how we expect the district to do. It also goes into a lot of those nuances as far as, you know, like the locker room conversation and the bathrooms and even some of the the other details like, you know, using the proper names and the proper pronoun identification. So I would, I would urge everybody in the board, uh, but also the public, you know, that's listening to and looking at, to really read it and read it as a complete document and look at, look at from that lens. And I think you'll see much like we did, uh, that this benefits everybody, parents, students alike.
Well, I agree, Tony, and and I I definitely appreciate all the work that has gone into this and it's really, really important. I appreciate Dr. Willis' meeting with the community on this, and I also appreciate uh shipment and Goodman coming in and explaining what the current laws are. That was very helpful. Does anyone else have any comments? I just have a question. Dr. Will, can you scroll back up to the part that was in blue?
Sure, maybe it is scrolling again.
Oh, there we go.
My concern, oh, actually, I'm back up. Thank you everybody for doing this. I know that this was a lot of work, a lot of input from a lot of different people. And so I think this was, this was a tough um policy that kind of finalized and put together. Um, I just had a question on this. First sentence is, is the district shall make every effort to include. To me, shall make every effort sounds a little gray. Can we just say the district shall include? Or if we're going to say make every effort, can we clarify what every effort would be? I just think in terms like thinking about the guidelines as well. What would the staff, what would the effort be for the staff? Like, is it, you make one, you know, you send one email, you make one phone call? I think it would just be good to clarify that or to just leave it a little bit more direct and say the district shall include the parents or guardians. So that was the only thing in the entire policy that just kind of gave me pause because I didn't really understand. I thought that sentence was still a little vague. But other than that, I I thought you you guys did a really nice job and thank you for for all your hard work on that. I can tell you're, you've got thoughts on.
I do. You know, and I, I appreciate and I'm pleased that that, you know, you're bringing up questions like that because that's really what we were trying to do there is clarify what what was going to happen, you know? During all of the consternation um on the the guidelines, you know, we had talked about it at the policy meeting. I know Dr. Will and I had had some some planning meetings on this and, you know, we're saying, I understand the concerns, but really these calls are going to happen, these notifications are going to happen. It's just the guidelines didn't give us that opportunity to say that. We do have the opportunity to say that here. So I'm trying to just kind of think through how we would expound on that and still stay within, you know, the the legal ease, but that's exactly what this first read is for, is to come up with things like that, to take that back, kind of crunch on that topic with legal people and and the committee. And to come back and say this as well, how we think we can, we can tweak that, make it right. I like that. Thank you.
I think this is one of the areas that we spent the majority of our time with stuff in. Um, you know, had the the areas that were most gray for all community members and families. Um, I know that we changed it. Mind. I think that this, the one we, where we landed, and I don't, I don't disagree with have, you know, have the people team or whatever, um, we'll get it again to see. Maybe there's another way to put it to be, but I I don't know. It it pretty clear because it goes on. When you go as on to say that the district shall make every effort to include parents or guardians in the process to protect the life of the rights of transgender or gender nonconforming student in accordance to T P S policy, but any applicable state federal requirements in situation where there's reasonable cause of belief that student is at risk of communal state, and any reporter's school staff will notify the parent, show the families as per the protocol. I think that says the steps. Um, I I don't know how if we want to get down into the minutia by saying any email or call X amount of steps. That was kind, you know what I mean? I don't know if that's, that's where we're going with that.
The one thing, I'm sorry, I didn't find you there, but uh, one of the additions that we put in here was we already have a policy that talks about communication between the staff and the parents, the staff and the family. Yeah, that goes into a lot of those, those details as far as, you know, calling, leaving a message, emails, but a lot of that minutia that has been put in there. And so what we were trying to do here, in addition to, you know, the, all of the other things that we're talking about here, is make sure that it's clear that that policy applies as well. In fact, there's a note down there. It's included as one of the uh supporting documents. Uh, I think it's.
I'm sorry. Can you almost like after that insert in accordance with policy X, Y, Z?
Yeah, it's in accordance with, yeah.
It is.
It's in there. Yeah, it's in that.
Sixty thirty, right? Sixty thirty in both parent communication. Okay, then I maybe I would just say T P S policy sixty thirty in parentheses, parent communication. Just something like that because your idea of every effort may be very different than my idea of every effort.
With with the title.
So that's kind of where I, that's kind of what I was going with that.
I think, yeah, the school could make all the effort and then the parent could, you know, that could be miscommunicated and say there was not.
Right, our idea of the effort might be different. So yeah, if if we reference then the parent communication policy, but I would put the name of the policy in there that would.
I don't think that's bad.
No, that's a great idea.
Well, and to that point, I don't think you have to change the rest of the sentence after, once you put that in parentheses right there. The rest of the, the rest of the statement, I think, you know, the title of it at least would be fine. And it means that everybody's going to go read sixty thirty.
Right.
I think the big thing that we were trying to get to was to make everybody feel comfortable, to know that everybody was going to be involved in any process with any student, barring any safety or dangerous concerns. But I think that was what a lot of folks were concerned about, not being kept in a loop about something that was going on with their student or child or what have you. So um, that's where we're really trying to be as transparent as possible to ensure that everybody who's, who's going to be included, that could be included, again, barring any danger or.
In fact, we went to great lengths to make sure this is part of the statement that talks about when the parents wouldn't be dealt with that danger. That verbiage in there, we make sure that it matches the requirements that are given to the, I mean, I forget it each time the reporter there. Miss it every time. Uh, but the 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 verbiage that tells the mandated reporter that they have to do these things, we make sure to mimic that so that it it's clear if then, this is why we're not going to, and they have to do these things, so.
It was really important, sorry.
No, no.
It was really important to us that, well, I think I would say it was really important to us to get this first read because we have been working on it since February, March. It has been a long time. It is a very important topic and to get this really ironed out for all stakeholders involved is very important. So having this first read was, was we, we ran our last meeting longer just because we wanted to make sure, we had want to keep kicking it. We really wanted everybody to get a good eye on how far it worked. And and really take, you know, and make sure that, because again, there was a lot of stuff up in the air, which made a lot of people feel uneasy. And when there's, there's questions or lack of information or or, you know, partial information, that's when things can kind of get misconstrued. So it was very important that we had it for this meeting so that we can get that second read in and move forward to on it. I know that we've had a lot of meetings as a board and so this was probably the toughest since joining the policy meeting. Policy committee has been one of the toughest ones that I've encountered. And I, you know, it's one of those things where you just care about the students, you care about the families, you care about the staff, we want to make sure we're doing it right by all. I I think that we really tackled a lot of hard conversations. We had a lot of public participation as well. So so thank you for allowing that to happen. I know several of our committees have been allowing that, so I think it's fantastic. Um, like Tony said, I would just, if we skimmed through it or if you've read it as a whole, I've read this. I don't even know how many times at this point. Um, but yeah, reading it in its entirety, it really kind of pulls off. Agreed, so. Yeah, no, no. Anybody else? Okay. So this is just our first read. We're going to see this one again. Okay, perfect. Okay, well, I guess we can move on to the committee liaison reports. Um, Christine to my right, anything from F F C? Um, no, we meet next week. Okay. Policy, Tony?
We just saw.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know. I had to ask though.
Well, we filled a queue though.
Yeah, yeah. We're just kidding. Yeah. Um, and Jen isn't here for communications. Um, let's see, what else? And how about negotiations? I know we just saw the parent educator contracts.
I can give a tiny of the details. Teacher negotiations has concluded. At the moment, it could change because you're at the ratification point of teacher, of the C E A, T E A. They have to ratify, then it comes to you.
Okay.
So uh, that's where it's at right now is that I'd ratify the state.
That's great. Um, did I miss any of our?
And kudos to the team because it took till one A M.
Oh, I know. I heard that. I heard that.
It was a long, long meeting. Well, good year one.
Was an oil burner.
And oil.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, mental health assessment that uh won't meet for, I think, until, I would say next week or the week after, same with curriculum. So curriculum is week of the twenty, I think the twenty seventh, actually. Um, so that's the next one.
Okay, well, we'll get those updates next time.
Here.
Um, we don't have Ashley here to give her chairperson's report, so let's move on to board action. Policy forty ninety. You and your scroll.
It's got a lag. It's showing my patient capabilities.
I'm I'm hitting a cookie.
Yeah. Jumping all over the place.
There's John. That's. Anybody else? Yeah. There. So Nina just took the chocolate.
They had took all the good ones over there.
Uh, chocolate chip. These are chips.
Hey, Jaden, this is Jen's green. I don't want anything remote to do with green. Can't provide sanity, Tony.
Sorry, no, no problem. That was a.
Yeah, you were watching. Yeah, I I I'm still coming out.
I've seen the. Pretty traumatic.
I like the. That was the last six or seven months of my life. Just.
Policy forty ninety, court suspect child abuse, our neglect of children. Um, so this again is is a full update of the policy. There's legal references here. Um, basically, this has already been reviewed by the board at, you know, or it was like a couple, month and a half maybe ago now. So it's already been reviewed as a first read. Uh, it's, it's just updating the policy where you see the strikeouts and then the new blue. And the last time it was updated was twenty thirteen. Um, just getting us right up to uh Shipman's model policy and making sure all the elements of the model policy are covered and the new definitions. Again, um, what happens most in these is things that were antiquated. For instance, guidance counselor is not usually used anymore. It's left in there because there's still some artifacts that refer to it as guidance, but is now known as school counselor. Um, other updates of language make it consistent with the new state codes on sexual assault, harassment, or that type of thing. Um, what must be reported? There was slight language changes in that, but um, the overall practice remains very similar. Um, there's also mandatory mandated things to have to be reported to police immediately and directly. Um, and that has go, that type of thing, regardless of whether you do D C F or not. Um, but you always as an educator have to do D C F. And uh, it also goes into and just clarified again, the new language, it includes sexual, I think, assault, which they didn't have language about sexual assault this way back in twenty thirteen. And now they have language specifically about sexual assault. Um, and so that's just updating those those pieces of language to that. Also, you know, inferred there, that type of thing is also being updated. Um, but that's really, the big changes are just updating to include that that language rather than the former language of how it's described for sexual assault, imminent harm, police reporting, um, you know, him her there. And uh, an agency name changes and adding the new uh staff references like school. And you've seen it before, so this is your second. The action we're hoping for is that you you pass this and then we can just take take over the table.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Will or Tony? Um, you even want to make a motion to?
Motion to approve policy forty ninety, reports of suspected abuse or neglect of children. Couldn't see it. I'm sorry.
Any discussion? No? Okay, let's vote.
Aye.
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 Christina?
Aye.
I am also an aye.
Okay. We are ready for public participation. Dr. Will, if you could get the two minute timer. And if anyone would like to address the board about um, anything we discussed on the agenda, please raise your hand. If that will, it's going to put up a two minute timer. I'll call on you. Now please state your name and your address for the minutes and you'll have your two minutes.
And I'll get you the names.
Heather? Hi, sorry about that. Heather McCann, can you hear me? Yes, you can.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay, sorry. So Heather McCann, sixty.
Heather, your, your mic just went out.
And she.
Might have gone out.
Yeah.
Here I am, here I am.
All right, hold on. I I have to restart you.
Okay.
You're good?
Yep. Heather McCann, sixty two cross and jive. My pronouns are she, her, hers. I wanted to commend all the hard work that was um, you know, done by um Walter Willett and the committees um to help our students feel safe, represented and included within our schools. The L G B T Q plus policy is following state guidelines while adding enhancements for the benefit of all students. And this is to the credit of Dr. Willett and his work with community and his guidance and leadership with work with the policy committee. He's a true gentleman and listens with great heart to the needs of all our students and the T P S community while balancing the state's requirements. You will find him at sporting events, clubs, and other activities for our children. His work week is seven days a week. He's engaged all day, evening, and weekends. He's available via phone, email, and in person to discuss concerns. He attends meetings many, many evenings of the month. His hard work with budgets, committees, contracts, admin educators, curriculum, students, and policy is just the tip of the iceberg. I hope that during the executive session tonight, that the board takes an objective look at all that he does for our T P S. I hope that during the executive session tonight, that the board takes an objective look at all that he does for our TPS community. We are extremely fortunate to have him, thank you.
Thank you. We move on to Rebecca.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Uh, Rebecca Doster, sixty-eight, Old Stafford Road. I just have a quick question for Tony in regards to the policy, um, changes the language update. Under the transgender policy, um. When it comes to those children that don't feel safe at home. But also don't feel safe expressing their concern of, of feeling unsafe at home. What happens to them in terms of them feeling safe enough or free enough. While they're in school to live as who they wish to live by. Without having to have the fear of what could possibly happen at home. So I guess my concern is a little. How do we protect the children and allow them to live freely within the school environment? But not have the fear of going home and not having to get DCF involved? I guess that's my question to you, but thank you all so much for taking the time to work on this. This is incredibly important to so many people in this town. I think you guys have done amazing work, Dr. Willett, thank you so much for everything. Um, and you know, Tony and to your crew, like, I absolutely appreciate all that you guys have done for this, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to say anything? No, I don't see anybody else. So, um, we can move on to points of information, oh, do we do? Oh, yes. Mister Urida? I don't know if I pronounced your name correctly, I apologize.
That's okay, Joshua Rutiya, seventy-two Pepperwood Road. Thanks, no problem, everybody gets my name wrong, um, so just a quick thing, um. In regards to the verbiage, um, while I think that it's gone in the right direction, at least in some regards. I, the verbiage of shall, and I understand that it's legal terminology. Um, I do think, you know, certainly adding in that, uh, reference to the, the policy guidelines that you have for the communication is helpful. I, I, I personally don't see any reason or understanding of why it wouldn't say shall include the parents from the start. Um, if there's a way to get that included in there in some fashion, I think it would go a long way. Put a lot of parents at ease. Um, I understand obviously the considerations when someone is feeling scared or there's issues at home. But even in those situations, I would say, parents should still be involved, but of course. If there's situations where DCF needs to be involved, then that's a diff, they need to be also included in those conversations. And I know you have to adhere to the guidelines and the policies by the state, but. Uh, parents are taking care of their kids for a reason, they want to raise them, they want to guide them, uh, they want to be there for them. Uh, the only other thing, and I know a short time here left, um, just looking for clarity, um, on the, the bullying. Uh, guidelines, I think, for the, the education, uh, for. Sorry, I'm trying to think of the verbiage, um, it was in the policy on the. The teen dating and all that, it looked like it started in kindergarten, and that seemed really strange to me that. There'd be any verbiage and things like that in education from kindergarten up, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Sophia just got me up to date that we were on the last public participation. So at this time, if anyone further would like to speak, please raise your hand. No, that's fine, um. Wow, thank you so much, this is. Perfect, thank you, um, if there are no further comments, we will close out the public participation and we will move on to the points of information. So at this time, if any board members would like to speak, um, in the room, and I'm sure we have people online, but Tony, you have your.
Yeah, I, I have a couple, thank you, Madam Chair. So one, I, I wanted to touch on what Anastasia was saying as far as the, the policy and then thank you for that. And that's, that's an excellent point, um. You know, I think backing it up a little bit, our, our intent overall is, is that question, you know. Well, how do we protect the children, period? Uh, how do we, how do we address, you know, issues where they don't feel safe at home, independent of, of why they don't feel safe at home? When we look at it specifically from, from the purpose of this policy and putting this policy together. Uh, what we were trying to do is limit, not limit, but codify, and really articulate. That the communication and the, the working with the parents, uh, as far as, you know, helping their children and their desire to help their children. And making sure that that, that school and, and family relationship was there. And that the only times when we wouldn't were, and, and then list those. Uh, as far as knowing when a child doesn't feel safe at home, or knowing when a child doesn't feel safe just in general. I don't know, and I'm gonna be quite honest about that, and, and what we did here. Was rely upon the, the copious amount of training and, and state agencies that exist to try to do that. It, it's something that, I, I think not just this board, but every board will continue to try to get their arms around and try to really make sure that we're, we're protecting all of those kids. I think we took a step here, we got close, uh, but I don't think we'll ever finish. Second thing, and slightly lighter note, transportation. Uh, and, and I recognize that we're in the, the second week, third week, uh, of school. Um, and that the buses and the first students and the new contract are all trying to really get their hands around it. Uh, but, you know, we're, we're on Wednesday and two days this week, it's been past five before the bus showed up with my daughter. The first time that we had an issue last week, we did get the text, we, we got plenty of notification and I appreciate the entire. Machine that it takes to do that, subsequently, we have not. I know that one of the things in this contract was the app. And, um, I'm excited to find out what that app update is, when we'll see that app so that we can know our kids are coming. Uh, but I'd like to get some sort of update as far as what's happening behind the scenes. To get this smoother, to, you know, we're, we're, we're looking for better, we're looking for progress. And I know it's there, just not seeing it at the end of my driveway.
Yeah, I'll say, I definitely saw buses in my neighborhood well beyond four o'clock, it was like four twenty, thirty. And I'm like, that's a long time for these elementary kids, I don't know when they got on the bus, but that's a long time for the day ends, so. I, I would love to know the answers to Tony's questions.
I mean, I think within the first seven or fourteen days, it's also, um. Them getting to the bus, especially with the littler kids, and, you know, getting them boarded and ones are shifting buses and. Going on different buses and schedule changes and people going to take differences here, there. So they're still probably loading slower than they're going to load once the year gets rolling, and that slows down the departure of the buses, which slows down the arrival of the buses. So I think we'll see that smoothed out significantly, you know, in the next two weeks between now and the next meeting. Uh, the app, I'm gonna post something on the next bulletin and I'll post it to the dashboard, first view is what the app is called. We finalized the, um, contract in August, so. It takes a little while to get first view going, because you have to get all the student, you know, and parent information aligned so that. Somebody that's not, you know, that doesn't have a child in the district can't actually get into this, so. Um, there's data entry and all that, so they, they, I think in one of our past meetings we had, uh, I think I said this, that it would be the end of September and. Uh, early October, somewhere in that zone, or first, where first view would actually be, you know, then parents would be able to download it. So there's some videos I'll post, um, and I think some of that information is also how to download the app. So parents can actually download it and start getting ready, but we should be able to have that functional by October.
That's perfect, I'd be grateful to see that actually come together and work, you know, having the kids, so it's a long day. For them and then to be on the bus, actually a long time, I know when my daughter was at TIS and the bus started getting shipped. It was later, and later, and later, and just like, you know, it, it's a lot for the little ones, so. I would be good to say, I will say that, um, open house was great tonight, I absolutely loved it. I don't know who would schedule a board meeting on an open house night, but you know, being what a may. Um, Hickey did a fantastic job, I think she's amazing, I think she's a breath of fresh air to come into the school. It just has, you know, the smiles all around, and so for her talking to all the parents tonight, she was very open, it was great. So, and I thank very much to all the teachers, definitely, you know, took you right through, walked a block to walk. It was great, and it was well attended, so I like to see that. Anyone else to spread the? You know? Okay. Okay, well then, at this point, we will, um, close out for the executive session, I will entertain that motion.
Motion.
You know, I think you need a motion to come out.
No, we need a motion to go in, if I don't, and yes.
So just, motion to enter executive session.
Motion to enter executive session. With the purpose, uh, the purpose of the superintendent evaluation.
And then.
Inviting the superintents.
Uh, in favor, um, actually, yeah, just on my, right, so let's just go ahead and move on, I'll vote.
I.
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 All right.
Laura?
I.
I'm a I as well, therefore you will enter into an executive session at eight twenty-eight tonight, so Jaden?
Bye.
Nay.
I.
I.
Bye.
Laura?
Nay.
Okay, I'm going to be an I as well. So therefore with, uh, majority, you. This is accepted, thank you. Okay, so. Can you squinty eye that?
Oh, yeah. No. Motion to extend the contractual agreement between the Board of Education and Superintendent Walter Willett. For three years from July first, twenty twenty-three through July thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, and update sessions three, terms of agreement, give superintendent's contract accordingly.
Sophia Shakes second.
Any further comments? We will do the roll call vote.
Jaden?
Greatfully, yes.
Nay. Yes.
Nay.
There will be a yes as well. And Laura?
Nay.
And still, so we're done. Very so with majority, um, you are, who have they ever agreed? Plus, okay, um. At this point, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion would you, second.
On my favor, can say aye.